Thirty, we'll call the meeting order. Commissioner Patterson, would you lead us in the indication, please, sir?
No, please, rise. Dear gracious heavenly Father, we come to you before this meeting, Lord, ask your blessings on it. Ask that you would be with each and every one here. Thank you for them, that they have been able to be here and participate, Lord, in our county government. Lord, just pray that you would just be with us as commissioners, that we would do your will, Lord, because your will is perfect. Give us wisdom and decisions we should make, and help that your will be done. Lord, now, thank you again for this day. Thank you for this county. The blessings you have given us each and every day is so abundant. And we don't want to take them for granted as we do oftentimes, Lord. But thank you again for all you do for us. Go with us again through this meeting, Lord. We ask that you just, again, be with it in each and every way. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Gentlemen, before we get started, I need to amend our agenda here. First one's going to be, it's under number seven. And we're going to put it seven B. And this is going to be an emergency purchase with Mr. Ratcliffe from Public Works. So that will be seven B, since he was seven, my boy. And then the next one, we would actually put as number twelve. And it's what this is, it's our first responders PTSD resolution. And then we would put public commentary at number thirteen. So, that being said, I'll ask for any discussion on this, gentlemen?
None.
I'm okay with it.
Okay, I'm making a motion to amend the agenda and ask for a second.
Make that motion.
I ask for a second.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so that brings us to approval of the minutes of October twenty twenty, October twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, regular scheduled board meeting. Commissioner Patterson, any errors or omissions in another minute?
No, I have none, Chairman, thank you.
Commissioner Cersey?
No, sir, looks good.
I'll make the motion to approve those minutes, and I'll ask for a second.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, under new business, we have number one, this is a board discussion in action. This is a variance request from Stephen Hannah to build a carport thirty-two feet from the center line, center of Delta Lane. Is anybody here that opposes this variance request? Anybody here that is in favor of it? All right. Gentlemen, when that with Mr. Nicholson, from where it's marked, he actually done a little brief figuring on that. Had to adjust it just a little bit, but that, that was really the only place he could put that at that time. So, any discussion on this, Commissioner Patterson?
No, I have none.
No, sir, it looks good.
All right, I'll make the motion to approve this variance request, and I'll ask for a second.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the next one is a variance request from Gail and Jerome Arnold to build a garage apartment twenty-eight feet from the center of Toccoa Preserve Lane. Any discussion on this? Is anybody here that is against this variance request? Anybody here to support? Any discussion on this, gentlemen?
Does that, you look at, yeah?
We do, yeah.
Okay. Twenty-eight feet's good.
It is.
Yeah, blocking anything?
Not blocking anything.
I don't have a problem.
I don't either.
All right, can I make a motion to approve this variance request and ask for a second?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the next one is board discussion action. This is for a alcoholic beverage license from Greg OMB with OMB Land Company. And, gentlemen, this, the application and everything is in your files. There is, he has completed everything that he's supposed to, except for the bag. And I believe he has one more week to run this in the paper.
Will actually run tomorrow, it's there to run. This is the first time that the two-time publication has come up. Our ordinance requires one, and we've had many go through, but the state now requires two. So, any approval that y'all grant would be subject to receiving the verification from the paper. They give you an affidavit saying that they published. It's already there, it just doesn't come out till any morning.
Okay. And that'll be the second time?
That will be the second time.
Okay.
Is there any discussion on this, gentlemen?
So, everything is checked out with this?
Everything they want, I'll just put it, they have our complete supplies.
Okay. That is, is that, that's just like beer and wine, right?
Yes, that's all it's approved.
Okay, okay.
Did you go when we, the last meeting, I think it was, that you decided that it was thirty, is that right, thirty?
Thirty-six. The variance came from sixty to thirty.
Okay. What days is it open? Today?
I don't know, but I know that it will still fall under the little sunny sales.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah, that's, that's long, yeah.
It's going to be sunny through Saturday.
Okay.
And I think even on Sunday, he has to wait until a certain time, like the one to say.
Baby County doesn't, that's the season, Baby County doesn't have.
Yeah, we need to keep the clock down.
I have no more questions, Chairman.
Commissioner Cersey?
No, sir, I'm, I'm going.
All right, that being said, I'll make a motion to approve this pending the notification from the U.S. paper tomorrow of the second run of the request. I'll make that motion and ask for a second.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, number four, we have board discussion action. This is the reappointment of Charlene Foster to the Fane County Recreation Board for another five-year term. Ms. Foster's not here tonight, so I'm assuming that her old lady is going to volunteer her to do that?
She's volunteered.
Okay. Gentlemen, any discussion on Ms. Foster?
She can go with you, Agent.
Absolutely.
No, I'm good.
Just got that experience now.
She still has kids in the record, well, right?
Yes.
All right, that being said, no other discussion, I'll ask for a motion to approve Ms. Foster.
I'll make a motion.
I'll ask for a second.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, number five is the reappointment of Brandon Holloway to the Fane County Rec Board for another five-year term. Any discussion on Mr. Holloway?
No, I have none.
And I'm assuming he's good with that, too?
He's good to go. It's gonna be his last term, he'll serve this one.
All right, that being said, I'll ask for a motion to approve Mr. Holloway.
I'll make that motion.
I'll ask for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, number six is the reappointment of Amanda Hampton to the Fane County Rec Board for another five-year term. Any discussion on Ms. Hampton?
I have none.
I have none.
She does well?
My second.
All right, I'll ask for a motion to appoint Ms. Hampton to another five-year term.
I'll make a motion.
Ask for a second.
My second.
All in favor? All right, so number seven is discussion action, this is both boards, correctors, I correct, live regarding the jam petroleum proposal.
Can you explain?
Yes, please.
Does you know where any fueling station installed out there at Public Works? And the, the, the ideal situation would be to pump those tanks, clean them, and fill them with foam. Well, we couldn't do that. So, we had some contaminated soil. They weren't leaking, it's just where they were dispensed over the years and filled and whatnot, they were so contaminated. We had to get rid of contaminated soil, fill back with gravel. I would like to have been able to done it, and say probably save a lot of money. That, that can't happen, it has to be a certified somebody to do that, so. Jam petroleum is the certification, you have certification on that, tank closing and stuff, so. With that being, this is an extra on top of what we paid to get the new ones installed. Thirty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars is what the total damage is on getting rid of all the contaminated soil and filling back.
And that's just the soil?
Contaminated, that's, 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 you know, solely the, everything is this out there, so.
Thirty-three thousand?
Thirty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-five.
And it's completely done, now?
Done.
So, are we going, we can't do the foam, or is it going to happen again in another five years?
Tanks are gone, they had to get them out.
Okay.
So, to get to the contaminated soil, which is under them, over the years, where they've been filled and the old, the old school stuff was in there, no monitor, and it just, whatever, if they filled it up, it ran over, so they, so, no, it didn't work like that.
So, there's no wells or?
No.
No morgue?
It's a, it's a federal gun.
Okay.
That was one thing, I'm not sure, we don't have a big monitoring for years down there, so.
That's what we had on there to pay them.
Yep, so we cleaned it up and discounted. Actually, how the full account, if I may say, that, anybody?
All right. Will that come out of your spawn?
It can, yes, sir.
You'd be part of that project?
Yes, definitely, part of the project.
You got her fixed up, it's clean?
Yes, sir. Everything working like it's supposed to.
Gentlemen, any discussion on this?
No. No, I have none.
I'll make a motion to approve, to approve this for the thirty-three thousand, four hundred dollars and fifty-five cents to be paid out of spots, and I'll ask for a second.
My second.
All in favor?
Thank you. And now, B.
Yep, seven B.
What we've got, we've got a truck out there with the engine, it's going to buy it in, and it's going to be one of the front-line trucks this winter. It's got a fourteen-foot stainless steel hopper, goes on the back, spreads solid with it. So, we're pulling it down, see what's going on with it, and it's non-reparable, it's, 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 so. So, this is a, a long block, we just use all the covers and stuff, and the turbos and all that good stuff to go with it. Inside's been rebuilt from the factory, it's a, it's a Caterpillar engine, it's got three-year warranty. So, that's, that's kind of where we're going with that, it's twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and three fifty-five.
And it's going, that's a new motor going into the truck?
It's a rebuilt, guaranteed rebuilt engine, it's not like a brand-new motor, it's got new parts in it. So, it's been a factory rebuild.
And that's your solid truck?
Yep, one of them solid trucks. It's one, how's it, stainless steel hopper out there, fourteen-foot. It, to be honest with you, it's kind of the, the workhorse of the solid, so.
Well, really, truly, so that truck, three-year warranty, so it's not like it's going to be, is it, does it say it?
No, we use that truck here around, but when the solid comes up, that's its reliability.
Okay.
Here we put that spreader in the back, and that's why we use a red solid.
It wasn't placed at, two-hundred and something, I mean, would have seemed kind of like the same things, but.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you know, about one or two-hundred and fifty-seven thousand.
Yeah.
Third by two motors, isn't it? Put one up for later.
Uh, I don't know.
All right.
Gentlemen, any discussion on this?
No, I have none.
All right, that being said, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of this engine for twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and three dollars and fifty-five cents, and that is to be paid out of spots as well, so I guess, I'll make that motion, ask for a second.
My second.
All in favor?
You guys a little update, paving on this hill, this happening, hopefully it'll be done tomorrow or?
Chip and seal? Chip and seal, we're ready.
Oh, it's asphalt.
Asphalt?
Yep.
That's all. Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you all.
All right, number eight, we have Fane County Sheriff Bob Sutin, Charlie Yanis, one person with other intentions.
So, we got two things for you guys, so you know our buddy's quite old, twenty-one years old, with all the equipment, everything that's in there. Our washer and dryer is at that point now where we've gotten twenty-one good years out of our washer and dryer. And I'll make one diamond, you know, now here. So, went out, sent orders out to try to get replacements, sent out a bunch of companies. Apparently, no one wants to really deal with us, except the company that put it in before, and that's okay, because they were able to work with them very well. Instead of tearing out the doorway to fit these items in, they're able to find one that will actually be able to fit in the doorway, we won't have to spend extra money to take it out, to take the doorway out, re-concrete, saw it out, and put it in. So, I am asking for one forty-pound washer, one sixty-pound washer, one seventy-five-pound dryer, and a fifty-pound dryer. And the difference in the two sizes are is, we'll use the larger ones, of course, for the beddings and the sheets and everything like that, we can do a lot loads for that one time, the other one's going to be for the clothes. Don't need to put up, you know, inmates' uniforms and a large one, and waste the gas and all that. So, this is about, this is the same models that we had before, it's, they're miners, comes with a three-year warranty, and I'm asking the committee for fifty-five thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars.
God, my, what, what are them things?
They're, they're industrial washers and dryers, unfortunately. They get used every day, seven days a week, probably twelve hours.
Three-year warranty?
Three-year warranty, yes, sir. And we have not really had any issues with ours up to the past year. And like I said, they're twenty-one years old.
Yeah.
And we've got our money's worth out of these washers and dryers. But now, this comes to the time where they can't get parts for them, or it's going to be more, it's more cost-effective for us to replace them now, they can't get the parts, and we're doing without.
When we have this installed?
As soon as I get the approval, we can have it installed in the next thirty days.
And that would come out of, racing what that's?
We were going to do it out of Artha?
We can do it out of Artha?
So, I have everything here, if you guys would like to look at them, they're all stainless steel, they're going to last this. And like I said, we went back to the same company we've had a good look with. Mine is a very good company, they backed their work, going by the judgment of, we have any issues, I went back and looked at all the history, we've had no issues with our washer and dryers till.
Where are they at, though?
Um, they're actually out of Tennessee, but they're the ones that come to our service calls on these machines anyways. And when I reached out to them, they were very good with me. Like I said, I went out to several different companies, and I still haven't yet to get anything back, and it's like they don't want to deal with the jam. And like I said, I tried to bet, but they've worked with us and gave us a discount and everything else, since we're a repeat customer and everything like that, so. I'm asking you, that's for A, okay?
There's two of those, each, you said?
Yeah, there's two washers, two dryers, one forty-pound washer, one sixty-pound washer, one fifty-pound dryer, and one seventy-five-pound dryer.
And the total on that?
Yes, sir, it's fifty-five thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars. And then it's, that's installation, then ripping it out, and then we have them agree to get it out of there afterwards.
So, they'll take, they'll take the scrap?
They're going to take it out, put it on the loading dock, and my plan is to give them a ZAC, get a truck, and we take it over to the scrapyard and see how much we can get for the money, and try to recoup a little bit of money back from the scrapyard. Get a couple hundred bucks safe this morning.
Can't, can't beat that?
That's, you know, if they're willing to take, take it apart and take it out there, load dock, we'll get it on the truck.
Okay.
Here, that's for fair.
Yeah.
Good job.
All right? And then, yep.
All right, so the second one is a new tilt skillet, the one we have now, we have also had for twenty-one years, and it no longer tilts. Basically, our kitchen is a self-contained kitchen, so we cook everything onsite in a very large skillet. They tipped it up, it pours into where it needs to be, and it does not do that anymore, so. The one we're looking at is sixteen thousand, six hundred and forty dollars and five cents. It comes with a sixty-month warranty. And if they were just going to replace the part that they thought was broken, it's going to be six thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars, and they don't even know if that's the correct part.
What kind, that's got to be the biggest skillet in the world, I believe, ain't it?
Actually, it's one of the.
But is it fifty-gum?
Yeah, it's fifty-gum, so, if you guys aren't familiar with tilt skillet, we're, you know, they cook all their food downstairs. So, anything from your age, your potatoes, the hot water, coffee, everything's done in this skillet, so this is the workhorse of, of the kitchen. And again, this one is twenty-one years old. It's the same equipment we've had here since the jail was, was, was built, okay? We've been nickel and diming it, nickel and diming it together, and now we've come to the point where we've done it there, and they want six thousand dollars, I'm not sure if they can fix it. Best alternative is, we've got to get a new one, because that's our workhorse that feeds our revenues.
Same company?
No, this is a different.
This one is Cajun Restaurant Supply out of Tennessee.
Did you bid it out, or?
They got three different, oh, two quotes, and then we got the proposal for it to have it fixed, and.
I have another quote for sixteen thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars, but that one only has a one-year extended warranty that you have to pay another six hundred and seventy dollars for. So, at that point, you're looking seventeen thousand.
More expensive than the other one.
Thank God for Artha, I guess that can come out of that, too?
We're just, you know, we're coming, the, the jail's open, guys, and we're trying to do the best we can.
How does the lock system come, that we?
Yeah, I'd be glad you asked that, Mr. Cersey. Matter of fact, I just got a phone call before coming up here, we're good to go on the second to the ninth for installing that, they'll be here for thirty days. And I'm hoping by the first week in January, we'll come back and tell you guys it's all been completed and you're good to go.
So, is jail going to be in good shape after that?
Jail will be in good shape, there's, I'm not going to lie to you all. We've got some more equipment downstairs that needs to be probably replaced, but I don't want to do it all at one time, that we're going to need to operate that jail. And I, you know, I'm trying to do it in stages. There's only two of us, so, you know, we're trying to do it piece by piece by piece. And like I said, the locks and hinges were the big things to get that situated. Now, this is probably the second biggest, is because, got to have clean laundry for these inmates, and we've got to be able to feed them. So, I'm trying to do it in priority as it comes about. So, as I come to priority, you know, I'm making everything I can last as much as I can, trust me.
I understand, I believe in you.
I'm, I'm doing the very best I can do.
Brittany, can I say that?
Yes, sir.
Liz Hall, you said this was a fifty-gum or a thirty?
Yeah.
It might be a thirty, I said, but.
I think she said.
I think that's a fifty, but it might be a thirty.
What's, what's the one you have now?
I thought it was a fifty, but it might be a thirty.
It's a thirty.
It's a thirty?
It's a thirty.
Now, you go to your prisons, you're looking at fifty, and the hundreds is the bigger, is the population goes up. But we're good with what we got right here. So, I was kind of looking at, expect them to expand the jail many times to something else, but we can do it for the way we need it on that.
All right, gentlemen, any, any other discussion on this?
No, y'all have it.
So, this will be a two-fold.
Yeah.
All right, first one will be the two washer, two dryers, in the amount of fifty-five thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars to be paid out of Artha. That being said, I'll make a motion to approve that purchase and ask for a second.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then the next one is this tilt skillet with a five-year warranty. In the amount of sixteen thousand, six hundred and forty dollars and five cents, Greg, did you get that five cent?
I'm saying, if you hear about that five-year warranty, that's a good one, too.
Any discussion on this?
No.
All right, that being said, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase for sixteen thousand, six hundred and forty dollars and five cents. For a tilt skillet, and I'll ask for a second.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That'll be paid out of Artha.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it, you're welcome, sir. Thank you, gentlemen.
Who's cooking?
Yeah, that was it, I'm done, I'm feeding it.
All right, so number nine, we have a, this is a board discussion action, this is a MOU of the Fane County Volunteer Fire Department. And we have our fire chief, Larry Thomas, to come and explain to us what this is.
I was never given.
And all the sayings up front of that is kind of self-explanatory, but it tells you what all we've got. Is that coming through? Which, we've already, there's one quote there that you'll have to up on for seven, seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five. We've already wrote a check for that, paid for that portion of it.
The volunteer?
Yes. Yes, volunteers did.
Okay, so what do you ask of us?
Ask, I'm gonna ask y'all if you'll owe us some money and, uh, with the payback, well, a hundred thousand dollars, and we'll pay it back at twenty-five thousand dollars a year for the next four years with intentions of paying it back over here.
Is that what the answer is?
Oh, sure.
I'm gonna be honest, sir.
I know you do.
Are you gonna, are you gonna stand, stand and vouch for it?
Yes, sir.
Are you gonna, I mean, if something happens, go follow me?
Let's go, hey, here.
You got money to cover, I know.
So.
I mean personally.
Yeah.
So you want a hundred thousand dollars and you're gonna, for four years?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And about all this equipment?
Yeah. And, and did you see that equipment?
I saw the picture.
That's, uh, and it's the top of the line stuff.
I believe.
For extricated cars, or extricated people out of cars. Uh, it does work a whole lot faster, it is an upgraded version, and the upgraded version, and we're looking at the total of three sets and then moving the sets that we have on out to the outline station.
So you paid this seventy-one thousand already?
Yes, sir.
So all this equipment is, uh, uh, what, a hundred and?
Eight. I think the total of approved purchase that we got was a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. And we've already paid for seventy-one thousand. Yeah, it's right there on the front page, we've already paid for the two complete sets.
So what do you want that extra, that, that money up to a hundred thousand for?
For the rest of it.
Oh, to get some more of it?
Yeah, well, actually, yeah.
Okay. And that's gonna, is that gonna be in every fire station?
Yes, not every fire station, but seven, eight rescue trucks that we have. But you'll have the one at one, we've got one at two, we've got one at three, we've got one at.
Four, six.
Eight, no, nine. Yeah, there's six of them.
And that's pretty much covering the county?
That is covering the county.
So every station will have one now, if we get there?
Not every station, no, not every station, just those six rescue trucks.
Just those six?
No, what about the equipment that it's replacing?
Which are you getting, the older stuff?
Okay.
But we moved our newer stuff out, you know, the new stuff that we have. Normally, we buy it in sets, like by Rescue One, I said, move Rescue Ones to Rescue Two, and then keep moving it out.
Some of those other stations end up having?
Everybody's gonna get an upgrade this way right here.
Okay.
Yes.
And so you're wanting us to, you're wanting us to let you pay us back twenty-five thousand for four years? And when are we gonna get this first payment?
Uh, I think we've got to set it up, I would say it at the first part, and it may be set up already for the first part.
Looks like on here, July first, twenty, twenty-five will be the first payment.
So every July, the twenty-first?
July the first?
July the first.
Of every year, of, yeah.
Of every year.
Until twenty twenty-eight.
Till twenty twenty-eight. We'll be watching you.
He wanted to say that fast enough, you're not this first payment.
I think you're, I'm gonna put music to it.
He wanted to say to you that fast enough, that.
I think I'll, once it's made for you, I'll be watching you. Yeah, you're right, William. Okay.
Don't do that, can you?
And you got that picture too, that's Rescue Two's set right there? If you're trapped in a vehicle, we'll get you out of there.
Better be there, trapped in a vehicle, but I'm gonna be kicking the sides of them, so. Let's see, which one is that one?
That would be the second picture. This picture with a little jump bait there, the wealthy jump bait, with this second picture. Into the, uh, that gives you the combi tool, the cutter, and the rain, combi tool spreader and rain.
Oh, okay, got you.
Yeah.
Okay. I got a triangle on the cutter, one diamond up with other, all of it.
You was a fighter?
Yeah, for about six months.
After Larry?
Not under him. No, I'd kill him. No.
He's always great here, doesn't he?
Alright, and any other discussion on this?
Nah.
First person? Okay, and before we vote on this, I'll let you know I'll, I'll be a.
Yeah, you're a volunteer.
Because I'm a volunteer department, so I'm, I don't feel right.
I guess.
To vote on that, so, that being said, I'll ask for a motion, uh, to approve this, uh, MOU with the volunteer fire department, I'll ask for that motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll ask for a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Thank you, sir.
No, thanks, y'all.
Uh-huh.
Hey, while I'm up here, y'all.
Open on, on that.
I just need to make an announcement.
Okay.
The station five turned out great, thanks to Zach and his guys and you guys.
Please be.
With it, five's been paid, we've got three paid. Everybody, I mean, you know, we still got a little bit to finish up of the three, but it's been paid, it's awesome.
I'd be glad that they, those people really loved it out there.
But I wanted to make the point to thank y'all and Zach's group at Public Works, they've done a great job on them. And that's gonna push us a little quicker, push me a little quicker. I kept saying I'm gonna wait on having the ground opening at five until we get the parking lot done. But now, we're in the midst of trying to plan that and get it set, and I am looking forward to having that out there. And maybe breaking some ground on a couple of more, so.
Yeah.
Thank y'all forever.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Let's know about that ground open?
Yes, sir.
See you in July.
Man, Zach gotta get life here, no interest for you.
That's right.
Alright. Number ten, we have more discussion action, gentlemen, this is our, uh, discussion of our next regular scheduled board meeting, which is gonna be November the twenty-sixth. Uh, as we know, that's the week of Thanksgiving, and, uh, I know a lot of people will be out of town. Uh, and some folks that we've had come to the agenda, say they would be out of town till, they, they asked us to put it on the first meeting in December, which I believe is ten.
December tenth.
Uh, so, my thoughts would be is to, uh, go ahead and, you know, cancel that meeting, hold everything open till December the tenth, uh, give it time for people to be with the families through, through the holidays.
That's good.
Um, y'all have any discussion on that?
Oh, that's a good thing.
Alright, so that being said.
So we're voting at the December, the?
The December tenth meeting is the regular, so.
It's the regular, man.
Yeah, that's the regular.
Okay.
And I think this is the twenty-fourth, is, should be the twenty-fourth, instead of the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
So we won't have a.
Yeah, we'll need to correct that.
Nope, you're right, twenty-sixth.
I think it's twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
I don't think it is twenty-sixth.
Eric says it's twenty-sixth.
Alright.
Yeah.
Yes, it's the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
So it's now twenty-fourth.
Well, I hope so, it's just.
I don't think they're gonna move on that day, probably. So we're doing it the, the?
Ten.
December tenth.
Then we'll be able to regular make the, cancel on this. So that being said, I'll make a motion to approve that, ask for a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Uh.
Aye. Um, number eleven, we have, uh, more discussion action, this is for the first compensation for the ten employees, which we do each year, and, uh, and I know last year, uh, we give, I believe it was two hundred dollars to each employee, although it hadn't been being a hundred dollars for many years. Thankfully be able to do two hundred and, uh, um, my recommendation would be to, to do that again, so. Um, that being said, we're holding up a discussion, you got anything on that?
I'd like to give more, but two hundred's good, I guess that's what we can, if I don't, yeah.
Do you wanna do that for all employees in full-time and part-time? I don't know if y'all wanna discuss that.
We did that last year.
I don't think that, do we give it part-time?
We did it last year.
You got the same as full-time?
We give it last year for a little.
I think, I think we did, did do part-time.
Oh, you should.
I don't see why how part, uh.
I think we oughta just to keep it like last year, whatever that was.
Okay, we'll follow suit with that.
Whatever, whatever that was.
Yeah.
You're right.
Yeah, I just don't see how why part-time we give it as much as a full-time.
I don't think that did last year, I think they got a hundred. I think that got a hundred, and like the regulars, full-time got.
Now, if you want to do a hundred and fifty for part-time, I would, I think you should give as much as full-time for, for a week.
I just followed suit with last year's.
Okay.
Any other discussion on that?
No, sir.
Alright. I'll ask for a motion that we, uh, for the first compensation to follow suit with last year's decision. I'll ask for that motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll ask for a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Uh.
And. Number twelve. Um, so what this is, this, this is a, uh, resolution, um, to enter into, uh, what enter into this resolution, where I know some folks have heard about, uh, giving this amount to, uh, public safety, um, both volunteers and, and paid, um, for PTSD program. And this was passed, um, I guess this last time here, legislation was passed.
Yes, sir.
And, um, so we, we decided, I mean, obviously, we're gonna enter in, enter into that, I think it's a great deal. Um, you know, there's a lot of these, uh, first responders that, um, really have had nothing uh, to fall back on in, in the PTSD program, and, you know, I, I think, uh, Chief Cersei will let you know there's some things, you know, that these folks see that they, I mean, don't feel like they need to talk to their family about.
You're learning.
You are, but, uh, but this gives them an opportunity to get some help as well, so we're very, very thankful for that.
Enough to do, but it's awesome.
We, we've offered it to somebody here, but I mean, it was just us, and now they're actually getting, uh, some help to be able to go do that, so I really believe this is a great program, uh, for these folks and, uh, what this resolution says is we will, we will enter into that, and, uh, and we've already worked it into our budget. So, I can read the resolution if anybody wants it, or I can make you a copy of it, it's pretty lengthy. So, I know you don't wanna hear me talk.
You wanna hear me talk?
I didn't. So, that being said, have you got any, uh, discussion on this, gentlemen?
No, sir.
No, that's a good thing.
Alright, I'll make a motion to enter into this resolution, um, for the PTSD program with the first responders, and I'll ask for a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Uh.
Aye. And that brings us to favor segment. It's a public commentary. That's number thirteen on this, so if anybody's got anything you'd like to say, come on up, tell us what you're on your mind and, uh, like, go through them.
Jane, this, this will be addressed to Zach.
Okay.
Um, going back to the, the petroleum cleanup, um, where is the soil being taken?
It was taken to the Fulton County landfill. And they cover up the garbage each night with contaminated soil, and then the next day, we'll get another layer of regular soil. It's in, it's, it's got mad under it and everything, I, I done checked on it, see where it's going. It's got a mad under, so it won't get into the water table, so it's, it's a clean, clean soil.
Okay, and, and your back fill of, of the soil that was removed?
Was, uh, agribased from quarry, so it's clean, come from, it's granite backfill.
Okay.
By gravel, crush around gravel. So, they had a, they had a team on site, as they dug each, each bite of dirt that they took out, they examined each bite till they got a clean results, and, and so they give the, the clean bill of health and could be refilled. So there's no, no contamination out there at all. And I got a certified register that meant that it's clean.
There you go, you got shirt by one.
It's, yeah.
Okay.
And, I know this is, I, I should've told you guys earlier, uh, the Schaefer Bridge, I've had numerous calls, that thing has been finished for almost two months, and, uh, I got to work today, it will be opening Friday. So.
We would've heard, looked at that, and that is really nice.
Yes, that's absolutely a nice bridge.
I like how it kept the rustic feel of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I'm just gonna give everybody information that it is, it will be open Friday.
Right, good deal.
Yeah, we'll do it.
Yeah, we need to, we, we need to do that about Thursday.
Yeah, 'cause you got it on Friday.
Yeah. Oh, it'll be, I guarantee you, there'll be a lot of pickings tonight.
Yeah. It's a big accomplishment.
It is a big accomplishment, absolutely. Anyone in? Mr. Cersei?
Yes, sir, I got something I'd like to say, uh, I just wanna say, uh, thank, thank everyone. I say, uh, Mr. Sabuda, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Uh, uh, Good Race?
Yes, sir.
You know, we never got to do any talking or anything, but, uh, I think we both had our hearts in the right place.
Yes.
I just wanna say, thank, thank everyone that did support me and, uh, and give me that honor to sit here because I feel really blessed and, uh, and I'm blessed to be sitting here with a good board and, uh, good people to work with, Land and Cherry too, and, uh, the county, I feel, is, we've done a lot, we got a lot more work to do, but, uh, I really do feel good about, uh, this board because I think we've achieved and done a lot of stuff here that's good for this county and, and the people, and we've been smart about how we spend. Uh, I do cut it up a lot, you know, because I enjoy what I do, but, uh, I just feel blessed and honored to, to get to serve another term because I, I take it serious because I've served in the public, uh, my entire life, you know, so I just wanna say thank you, and, and, and I love, I love you from the bottom of my heart for that. Good luck if we do it again, but, uh, go another route. But anyways, thank you all, that's what I wanna say.
Appreciate you. Hey, I'd like to say, if I may, just jump on that just a little bit, um, we were very humbled and fortunate not to have anybody running against us in this thing. And, uh, and when I say it's a humbling experience, it truly is. Um, you know, I, I try to look back to see if there was ever any other commissioners on the code, and, and I'm not sure. Uh, I went back a little bit, but I'd like to think that we're doing a good job, and everybody sees that and says, hey, we don't wanna run against you. But I wouldn't know if it ain't that we've been so transparent that people are like, ain't no way in the world I'd take that job. So, I hope it's the first one, but, uh, but like him, I, you know, we, these two commissioners up here, uh, I can honestly say, we, we may not have the same path to get to the location, but we have the same destination. And that's to serve the people of this county, and, uh, and that's what we wanna continue doing. Uh, obviously, with y'all's help, and, and we're very thankful for that. Uh, but we, we knew coming in, we had a lot of work to do.
Yeah.
And, uh, it's a non-stop effort, and it's from every department that we have.
It's a learning.
And it's not just us as, as the board of commissioners, we, we have, I've said it before and I'll say it again, we have a good group of employees that work with us. We have a good group of department heads that take the job seriously, and they also have a vision to move forward. We have a good group of department heads that take the job seriously, and they also have a vision to move forward. And, and nobody really likes progress, but at the same time, when, when progress passes you, you have no choice but to try to catch up to that progress. And, and it had passed us for a while, and, uh, so it's, it's up to us and to, to try to catch up, and, and we, we hope that we're doing a good job for yous. Um, we hear some of the negative, we always hear that, that's just part of it, but, uh, sometimes those, when, when the negatives come, few and far between, you know, you might be doing something wrong.
That's right.
So, uh, I appreciate, like Tony said, I appreciate every one of you, and, and like these meetings that we have, we do cut up the wall, because I don't like sitting out with a big tie, I like my plaid shirts. It's a pain in the head, but I like to sit here and, and engage in with y'all on a, just on a regular basis, you know? And there may come a time we have to, you know, address somebody a little bit different, but I hope we don't get to that point, I hope we can sit here and have good conversations, um, with everybody that comes to these meetings, 'cause we serve every one of you, so, uh, and if there's ever anything I can do for yous, please don't hesitate to call any one of us, 'cause we'd be more than happy to, and these post-commissions, you know, they like doing their jobs too.
Why you looking funny?
So you can call them, you can call them anytime you want.
Is it because I tell everybody to call you, is that?
Well, it might be, and his, uh, his cell won't be on the, uh, social media here for too long, you wanna, we call him twenty-four seven, 'cause that's how we serve. I'm just kidding.
Yeah.
But I do think, and, uh, anything else, gentlemen?
Oh, sir, I'm good.
I'm good.
Is there a need for executive session tonight?
Well, no, I guess I'll slide one out here.
All right, that being said, I'll make a motion to adjourn and ask for a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.